Sorry Larry, doesn't look like your mic's on.
And our zoning officer Marty, so, so that given, I just have some things to read. The zoning board review has established procedures, rules and guidelines for the administration of applications and the conduct of its meetings and public hearings. The rules of procedure amended in January 2018 are posted on the town's website and are available here tonight. The zoning board hears applications for relief from the provisions of the zoning ordinance and renders its decision based on specific facts found in the documents and testimony submitted. It is the applicant's burden to prove that relief from the zoning ordinance is warranted. To do so, an applicant must provide evidence that each criterion of the approval listed in sections 260-33 or variances in section 260-34 or specific, special use permits have been met. If you are appealing the decision of the zoning officer, administrative officer or planning board, you are here to convince the board that the officers or board's decision was in error, either procedurally or legally. This evening, we have four items to address and we do not take up a new item after nine o'clock PM. Each application shall be heard in a manner that permits the board to obtain and consider the evidence in an orderly and meaningful manner. Testimony begins with the zoning official's summary of the application and his recommendation. The application and all documentation submitted by the applicant prior to the meeting will be marked as exhibits and made part of the record. Applicants should assume that the members of the zoning board have received all the material submitted with the application. Tonight's presentation by the applicant should be limited to information relevant to the burden of proof and not recite or repeat information already submitted with the application. Any new information received by the board this evening will be entered into the record. However, the board retains the right to continue the public hearing to fully digest any new information presented. All questioning of witnesses shall be at the direction of the chair. All questioning of witnesses shall occur when the witness is called. The proponent of the witness shall ask its questions. Interesting parties shall then ask the witness their questions and the proponent may then ask follow-up questions. Presentation of affirmative case by any interested party other than the application will be allowed as part of the public hearing following the applicant's presentation. Continuation or closing of the public hearing is at the discretion of the zoning board. The first, oh, first of all, let me ask our zoning officer, is there any changes to the agenda?
I think it's this one, I have to turn.
Yes.
Okay.
There we go, okay. The 10 Oak Street sign application has been continued to the July 12th meeting.
Anything else? That's it? Thank you. All right, the first order of business tonight is Morgan Havelk, Havelk Beck at Two Leeward Drive. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot the minutes. I need a motion to approve the minutes or correct the minutes. It's moved by Jeff.
Seconded.
Seconded by Larry Burns. All those in favor? Opposed? Passed. All right, the first order of business, Two Leeward Drive. Marty, could you fill us in?
Yep. The applicant is requesting a five yard, a five foot front yard setback variance and a five foot corner side yard setback variance to construct a covered front porch and a master bedroom addition above the existing one car garage on the left side of the single family home at Two Leeward Drive pursuant to section 260-33 variances and 260 attachment 10 schedule of dimensional regulations of the Town of Westerly zoning ordinance. The subject property contains 8,264 square feet or .19 acres and has 98.51 feet of frontage on Leeward Drive and 73.95 feet of frontage on Setting Sun Drive. There are no wetlands on the property and it is in the AEBFE 12-foot flood zone. The lot is in the medium density residential 20 zone, MDR 20. The surrounding neighborhood consists of medium density residential 20, MDR 20. The property contains an existing 1,450 square foot single family home which was constructed in 1995. The proposed project involves the construction of the covered porch, the master bedroom addition above the existing one car garage on the left side of the single family home. This is a 1,450 square foot single family home on an 8,264 square foot corner lot. The property only contains 41.3% of the lot area required for the MDR 30 zone, MDR 20 zone, I'm sorry. Expanding the footprint of the home is not an option due to the septic system location, impervious surface requirements and the tight setbacks on the lot. A second floor addition above the garage is the most reasonable option to expand the small living space. The addition will add 458 square feet of living space for a total of 1,908 square feet. The proposed covered porch will be set back from the existing garage and will enhance the overall appearance of the structure. The zoning department supports this application.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Marty? Okay, I guess not. Sir, you are representing yourself?
I'm the contractor.
You're the contractor, okay. Could you please state your name and how you're related to the project?
My name's John.
I need you to talk into a microphone, please.
My name is John Heinegger from Kern Heinegger Construction LLC and I will be the general contractor in charge of the project.
Okay, you can bring the microphone closer to you. Have a seat. All right, I will have to swear you in. If you raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you, okay. You can begin your presentation.
The master bedroom addition is going over the existing footprint of the existing house which is over the setback. And the covered porch will just be an extension of a existing covered front entrance. It will, aesthetically, I have some photos if anybody would like to see if that would help with the visual.
You could distribute it to us and we'll put it into as an exhibit. Do you have copies for everyone?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the first set of documents, it's actually one photograph of the house from the front that I'll identify as applicant's one for this evening's hearing. Correct. No, that's yours. What's that, sir? You gotta go through me, I gotta identify. And with your permission, Mr. Chairman, there's a second photograph that is a side view of the home that we'll mark as applicant's two for purposes of this evening's hearing.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, do you want to continue your presentation?
This is my first application, so I'm not quite sure how to continue my presentation.
Well, just tell us what, anything you want about why you're doing it and you can refer to the photographs if you want.
Well, the reason for the variance is there was an issue with a neighbor in a property line, which is what led to the variance application. Basically, the neighbor on the backside had a fence that was on Morgan's property and he, he put a pool in last year which required a variance and moved the fence, you know, two feet back where the property line was and the neighbor was unhappy with that.
I think what he's saying is this could have been done as a dimensional modification, but knowing there would be a written objection from the neighbor which would automatically kick it to the zoning board.
Okay.
He just, we agreed that it was best to just file a variance rather than have a six week delay.
All right, this would have been a routine referral to you.
Yeah, the movement of the fence didn't violate any zoning issues at all, correct?
No, we don't, we don't regulate fences other than height.
Well, other than height and on the property line, obviously.
No, we don't permit fences.
You don't permit fences?
No.
Who does?
Nobody.
So I can put a fence on my neighbor's yard anytime I want?
Well, that's between you and your neighbor. It's no, it's no diff, I mean.
But the fact is, the reason why it's sent to us is because there is an objection or a problem.
We knew.
Yeah, it's not routine.
Right, right. Normally, this would have been done as a modification because it's a relatively small encroachment on the setbacks within the 25%.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody on the board, does that conclude your presentation?
Yes, sir.
All right, does anybody in the audience wish to speak in favor of this? Does anybody in the audience wish to speak against this? Does anybody in the audience want more information? In that case, I'll ask the members of the board, does anybody have any questions for?
Quick. John, I'm sorry, go ahead. Now, the problem with the neighbor, did that affect your plan going forward?
No, sir.
Okay.
It was, you know, the neighbor's fence was on his property. He moved it back to the line and that was where the problem.
So you didn't have to modify what you were originally going to do? Okay, thank you.
Jeff? Just quick question on the height of the addition over the garage. I mean, is that ridge, is that ridge of that addition lower than the existing main ridge of the house?
It will be, it will be equal height to the existing ridge.
That's in conformance of the height variances for Westerly?
Yes.
Will there be an ASBIL done just to prove that?
Excuse me?
Well, we might require an ASBIL to prove the height very, height is in conformance with zoning regulations. So.
Okay.
You prepared for the, to do an ASBIL to show the height of that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
No. Okay, so I just want to bear with me. I just want to be clear in what we're doing. So in the picture of the front of the house, we have a garage and I'm assuming that there's bedrooms on the upper floor.
Correct.
And so the occupants want to make a master suite because they feel that they need more room?
Yes, they are a young couple, hopefully starting a family and it's a relatively small house right now. And they have a very large dog as well and they want more room.
Dog needs a bedroom too, okay. And, and so the suite is being added for, for, to expand the family and for the dog, okay? And we're only adding one bedroom and a bath.
Correct.
Okay. And how many bathrooms are in the house right now? I should know this, but I don't.
There is a full bath and a half bath.
One and a half, okay, so it'll be a two and a half bath. And we're just going straight up over the garage, adding this room, right?
Correct.
To the same ridge line, so all we're doing is adding the exact area vertical over the garage that adds another room and a bathroom.
Correct.
Okay. Yep, I got, and, oh, and the porch will go along the front of the house. Okay.
On the same, same line as the existing entry, covered entryway, that entry porch will just continue all the way to the right side of the house.
And in your opinion, is this house going to look like the other houses in the neighborhood?
Yes, right now, it's, it's one of the uglier houses in the neighborhood and this will make it one of the better looking houses.
Okay. That's pretty much all I got.
Any other questions? I'm going to pull the board and see how we feel. I'll start over to my left with Lori.
I'm in favor of the plan.
Larry?
I am also in favor of the plan.
Dawn?
I am in favor of anything that improves an ugly house.
I assume that refers to this house.
This house.
Jeff?
I too am in favor of the project, yeah.
Okay, then I will need a motion to close this hearing.
So moved.
Jeff moved it and Dawn seconded it. And all those in favor? Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff.
You know, get through this.
Mr. Chairman, we have before us a request by Morgan H. Holbeck, who is requesting dimensional variances to construct a covered front porch and a master bedroom addition above the existing one car garage on the left side of the single family home at Two Leeward Avenue pursuant to section 260-33 variances and 260 attachment 10 schedule of dimensional regulations of the Town of Westerly zoning ordinance. The subject property contains 22, I'm sorry, 8264 square feet and has 98.51 feet of frontage on Leeward at, Leeward Drive and 73.95 feet of frontage on Setting Sun Drive. There are no wetlands on the property and it is in an AEBFE 12-foot flood zone. The lot is in a medium density residential 20 zone, MDR-20. The surrounding neighborhood consists of a medium density residential 20, same zone. The property contains an existing 1,450 square foot single family home which was constructed in 1995. The zoning board held a public hearing concerning this application on June 14th, 2023. Zoning members Jeffrey Russo, Vice Chairman Lawrence Chapa, Larry Burns, alternate Alan Martone and alternate Lori Moore were present in her testimony during the entirety of the public hearing. Absent excuses, our chairman Walter Pavlikovich. The zoning board was provided with a zoning narrative dated June 1st, 2023, which outlines the details of the application and was also summarized by the zoning official Martin Loizell during the public hearing, thereby made part of the public record. The following individuals spoke as representatives and or experts of the applicant is Mr. John Heinegger, G C from the Kern and Heinegger Construction Company. There were no, there were no individuals who spoke at the public hearing in support of the request and no individuals who spoke in opposition to the request. And at this public hearing, the following testimony and additional materials were entered into the record. As noted, applicant's one photo showing the front elevation of the home and applicant's two photo showing the site elevation of the home. There's also a letter that was distributed by Barbara Whittaker expressing some of her concerns with the proposed variance. Mr. Chairman, through the public hearing process, the board heard the applicant's request for dimensional variance is based on the need for expanding his home with a master bedroom suite above the garage and extending, extending the front porch. The following plans and specifications are hereby made part of the approval and may not be altered, amended or changed in any material way unless approved by the Westerly zoning board review. The determination of whether any alteration, amendment or change in the approved plans is material shall be made by the town zoning official and the zoning board chairman. The zoning board hereby grants to the zoning official administrative authority to approve further non-material modifications to its approved plans. Submitted was a site plan, a boundary survey as-built by Morgan H. Holbeck, Two Leeward Drive Plot, Plot Number 137, Lot 32B, Town of Westerly, County of Washington, Rhode Island, one sheet prepared and stamped by James Bernardo. PLS number 1961 and dated February 21st, 2023. Architectural plans, a garage addition, Two Leeward Drive, Westerly, Rhode Island, five sheets prepared by Modern Structural Engineering, P L L C stamped by Jonathan Comtice. P E number 13007 and dated February 23rd, 2023. Considering the information presented at the public hearing, it is my opinion that the applicant has satisfied the standards of section 260-33 variances whereby the granting of the variance is due to the unique characteristic of the land on which it resides and is not due to physical or economic disability of the applicant. There's a lot is only 60, 8264 square feet, considered non-conforming lot in an MDR 20 zone, in an MDR 20 zone. That the alleged hardship is not a result of any prior action of the applicant and does not result primarily from the desire of the applicant to realize greater financial gain because in this case, the claimed hardship is due to the lot size restrictions and building over the garage is the only viable option and the lot does have a pre-existing, non-conforming status. Hardship is peculiar to the situation of the applicant. There is a hardship if strict adherence to the dimensional requirements interfere with the reasonable full enjoyment of uses permitted on the property or if strict adherence is contrary to the spirit of the zoning ordinance and amounts to an unnecessary injustice to the applicant. There may be also a hardship if there is an irregular shape, other peculiar characteristics, unique to the subject partial. Here, there is a hardship because the lot again is irregular shaped, only 8264 square feet in an MDR 20 zone, considered to be pre-existing, non-conforming, frontage and front yard zoning compliance is based on this existing zone. This will not alter the general characteristics of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or comprehensive plan because it will be improving the existing home with a new master suite considering, consisting of a bedroom and bathroom and an existing addition to the front porch. This is justified as being the least relief necessary because due to the footprint of the lot, expanding the footprint footprint of the home is not an option due to the septic location and the already tight setbacks and irregularity of the lot and its sidelines, sizes and dimensions. And the alleged hardship suffered by the owner, if the dimensional variance is not granted, would amount to a mere, more than a mere inconvenience. The applicant has demonstrated that the relief sought is reasonably necessary for the full enjoyment of the applicant's permitted use. In reaching this conclusion, the board has considered the fact that if the applicant is prohibited from using his property for its chosen permitted use because of a dimensional restriction, the applicant has met the more than mere inconvenience standard. And here, the use is a single family home and it is, and it is a permitted use. In addition, the applicant has demonstrated that if a dimensional variance is not granted, denial would amount to more than a mere inconvenience because of the need to add a bedroom without changing the footprint of the property. And without this option, it would be more than a mere inconvenience to, to the family household. As such, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve a five foot front yard setback variance and a five foot corner yard setback variance to construct a covered front porch and a master bedroom addition above the existing one car garage on the left side of the single family home at Two Leeward Drive pursuant to section 260-33 variances and 260 attachment 10 schedule of dimensional regulations of the Town of the Westerly zoning ordinance with no conditions to follow.
We have a second? Larry Burns seconded it? All those in favor? Hi. Opposed? Abstained? Surprised? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Gargling.
Yeah, right. Our next order of business is Frank Albianni, 5 Pauline Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Patrick Doherty. I'm an attorney with offices at 887 Boston Eck Road in the Town of Narragansett. I'm here representing the applicant Jake Santilli and the owner is Mr. Frank Albianni of the property itself.
Hey, thank you. If you're going to have people, as they come up, I'm going to swear them in, okay?
Of course.
Would you like to begin?
Yes, thank you. Just in summary, we're, this is a lot in the corner of Pauline and Nile Street. It's a substandard, pre-existing, non-conforming lot of record, very, very tiny. It's 5,993 square feet in a 15,000 square foot zone. The lot has many constraints. It's also a corner lot as well. And attention was made to try and conform the configuration of the lot and the footprint of the building to respect in the most critical, which I believe is the most critical setback and that would be the corner side yard for purposes of safety, view clearance and whatnot on there. I have with me this evening, Mr. Paige Bronck, who's an expert in planning, who I'd like to call to testify as the criteria that must be met for this purpose thing.
Come up, please. Oh.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I jumped the gun, I apologize.
No, it's my fault, I should have more control here. I'm sorry, please Marty fill us in.
Sure.
That's one strike against me.
And me.
The applicant is requesting a 7.5 foot front yard setback variance, a 1.9 foot right side yard setback variance and an 11.6 foot rear yard setback variance to construct a new three-bedroom, single-family residence, 34 feet by 38 feet with a one car garage from a vacant lot at 5 Pauline Street pursuant to section 260-33 variances and 260 attachment 10 schedule of dimensional regulations of the Town of Westerly zoning ordinance. The subject property is a vacant lot which contains 5,994 square feet or .13 acres and has 75 feet of frontage on Pauline Street and 80 feet of frontage on Nile Street. There are no wetlands on the property and it is not in a flood zone. The lot is in the high-density residential 15 zone, HDR 15. The surrounding neighborhood consists of high-density residential 15. The proposed house will be connected to the municipal sewer and water systems. The zoning department supports this application. As can be seen on the attached sketch, the attached sketch. As can be seen on the attached sketch, the attached sketch, the building envelope on this property is only fifteen feet deep by thirty-seven-point-five feet long. This is a small corner lot that only has forty percent of the lot area required for the H D R fifteen zone. Since the frontage on Pauline Street is shorter, that is the front property line and the frontage on Nile Street is the corner side property line. The lot is not perfectly square and the home is situated parallel to the front property line, which places it at a slight angle to the siding, corner side lot lines. The proposed home contains one thousand five hundred and forty-four square feet of living area, which is modestly sized and appropriate for the lot.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Marty? No, okay. Our person handling this is asking me to please get your name nice and clear for him.
Of course. My, my name is Patrick Dougy, D O U G H E R T Y.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, sir, could you state your name and your relationship to this application?
Sure. My name is Paige, P A I G E, Brunk, B R O N K. My relationship is as an expert planning witness.
Okay, we recognize that. Could you raise your hand? And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
And, Mr. Chairman, just for purposes of the board's edification, Mr. Brunk is an A I C P certified planner. He's testified before this board.
I recognize him at past meetings. That's why I said we recognize his expertise.
Thank you. Mr. Brunk, could you please tell the board what you did in preparation for your testimony here this evening?
Yes, I have reviewed the application, the plans, conducted site visit, also have reviewed the pertinent zoning sections and also the comprehensive plan and prepared my comments for this evening.
All right, now, with, with respect to your conclusions, what are some of the findings that you made after your inquiry into the property, the zoning ordinance, and the constraints of the lot itself?
Some of my findings, basically, the lot is extremely small. It's a corner lot. The requirements for setback in Westerly for a corner side yard are different from a regular side yard. Also have found that the requested structure, a single-family house that is proposed is of modest size and that it has been proposed to be basically in the middle of the lot with, with the challenges that occur in having a small corner-sized property.
Now, Mr. Brunk, one of the standards that must be met in the granting of the dimensional variance here is that the hardship from which the applicant seeks relief is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land or structure and not to the general characteristics of the surrounding area and is not due to a physical or economic disability of the applicant. Have you come to a conclusion as to whether or not that standard is met with this application?
Yes.
And what are the factors that bolster your opinion that that standard has been met?
Basically, that it's a modest-sized home, two-story as well versus a one-story. So the, the structure has been compressed and tried to be as efficient as possible. Also, the corner, the corner yard setback is different than the regular yard setback, which also pushes the, any proposed structure back from the corner. And also I did find that the situation and the request by the applicant is, is not due to the characteristics of the surrounding area. The, the area, basically, a single-family home. But this is a corner lot. Not everyone has a corner lot. So I think that's the unique situation. And also, the request is not due to the physical or economic disability of the applicant.
Now, Mr. Brunk, in addition to that standard, there's another one that has to be met, and that is that the hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant and does not result primarily from the desire of the applicant to realize greater financial gain. Have you come to a conclusion as to whether or not that standard can be met by this application?
Yes, I believe that it can, that the hardship is not created by the applicant. This lot, this corner lot, five thousand nine hundred ninety-four square feet, relatively small, has been here for many years. The, the applicant is seeking a use that is allowed within this H D R fifteen zoning district and which is a single-family home on this small corner lot. So there are constraints. So it's, it's not, this request is not being made as a result to realize any greater financial gain. It's to realize a fairly basic structure with a primary use that's allowed by zoning.
Mr. Brunk, in addition to that, there's another, just three more standards here, but let's get to the next one. We have to satisfy this board that the granting of the requested variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan upon which this chapter is based. Have you made a determination as to whether or not that standard can be met? And if so, how, what are the factors that support your opinion?
I have made a determination. I do believe that that standard can be met in terms of the character of the surrounding area, residential, basically grid pattern street in that neighborhood, primarily a single-family. Within that particular block itself, most of the structures appear to be two-story, one and a half to two-story. There's only one structure that is a single-story. So I think a two-story structure of this size would be complimentary in that neighborhood. In terms of the zoning ordinance, high-density residential fifteen, meaning fifteen thousand square foot lots, this lot's less than half that size. But the, the proposed use being a single-family home would definitely be in alignment with what is intended by the zoning ordinance at this location. Specific to the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan also identifies and designates this location similar to the zoning identifies it as a high-density residential area that's delineated on the future land use map within the comprehensive plan. And the plan generally does speak, particularly in the housing element, for the need for residential development and housing within Westerly. Just a couple quotes from the plan. The plan states that it encourages a range of housing options for all. Also, the plan states that it's concerned about the older age of Westerly's housing stock and the quality, the condition of the existing housing stock. So as a result, the plan emphasizes new production as well to try to assist with that.
Thank you, Mr. Brunk. Have you come to a conclusion whether or not the next standard, that the relief to be granted is the least relief necessary?
Yes.
And, and what are some of the factors that support that conclusion?
In looking at the building plan, it appears as though there's been a careful effort to try to be efficient as possible. Already mentioned the two, the two-story, but also placing the center of the building in the center of the lot seems to be kind of the common, common sense approach on how to deal with that. The, also the garage bay for a single car, that, that has been narrowed from a normal twenty-foot width to fourteen feet. The, the garage itself is on the northern side of the property, closest to Niles. And if you look at the plan, you'll notice where the garage is, it starts to, coming out from the building, the garage is narrower than the building itself, and that aligns with when you get closer to the corner sightlines. So my point is that the building has been carefully designed, crafted to try to fit on the property in the best way possible. There's no deck that's proposed. Minimal relief on the right side yard line, one-point-nine feet, again, because the building's being pushed back from the corner sideline requirement of twenty-two and a half feet. The lot depth is fairly shallow, so that's going to impact the front and the rear of the property. Causes issues with both of those setback areas, but the building kind of splits the difference to a certain degree. That's why there's the seven-and-a-half-foot variance on the front and eleven-point-six-foot variance to the rear. Terms of sightlines, corner lots are challenged in that way. So this building protects the sightline as situated. In terms of the immediate butter on Niles, Eight Niles, and looking at that property, there's a, there's a driveway that basically abuts this property's rear property line. That driveway at Eight Niles is a four, roughly a four-car driveway, double width. And Eight Niles, the structure is on the other side of that driveway. So in essence, if this is approved at this location, this proposed structure, the rear of the structure will be, according to my calculation, about fifty feet away from the closest wall of the structure at Eight Niles.
Thank you. Finally, the, the last standard that has to be shown to be met to this board is that the hardship that will be suffered by the owner of the subject property, if the dimensional variances are not granted, shall amount to more than a mere inconvenience. And the fact that a use may be more profitable or that a structure may be more valuable after the relief is granted shall not be grounds for relief. Have you come to a conclusion as to whether or not that standard can be met with this application?
Yes, I believe that it can be met.
Some of the bases supporting that opinion?
Again, modest-sized house on a small five thousand nine hundred ninety-four square foot lot. That lot is less than half the size of a lot if it was newly created. So clearly that's a special situation. Again, the sighting of the structure in the middle of the lot. Also, that the structure has a fairly small footprint, thirty-four by thirty-eight feet. That's in line with, you know, a small house that meets current market demand. And although you take a house of that size and you put it on a lot in the best spot possible, it still is going to require some relief, again, the front, the rear, and the side. It's a common sense placement, basically to put it on the lot at that location. It's virtually impossible to actually situate a modern home in that property that meets market demand. If the variances were not being, not granted, it would impair the project and it would not allow the structure to be built. And also, if the dimensional variances are not approved, this would amount to more than a mere inconvenience, inconvenience because the structure could not be developed.
And, and would you consider the structure that is proposed to be reasonable in terms of size and scope?
Yes, definitely.
And in keeping with the general character of the surrounding neighborhood?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. I have no further questions, Mr. Brunk, if you, the board may.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Brunk?
What consideration for drainage? I don't see topography on the, on the site plan here. And there's a, some very minimal site plan. So I'm not looking, I'm not seeing topography. What, what's the considerations for drainage? I don't know. I can't tell if there's neighbors next door based on the, the maps here and how close the neighbors' houses are to this particular development. So what are the considerations for, you know, storm, storm drainage and footing drain, underground footing, footing drain, foundation drainage?
Well, actually, if you, if you do look at the, if I may address that, sir, if you look at the report from Natural Resource Services that is included with this, you, they have some pictures that are added to, and that, that was a report that showed that there were no wetland features within two hundred feet of the surrounding property, therefore, no wetlands. I'm sorry, is that not, no, and, and that was a report showing that there were no wetlands features and no Rhode Island D M permitting were required. But if you do, I, I understand your question. I'm getting to that right now. If you do look at the, the pictures, it's a relatively flat lot. You can see it's surrounded by stone walls. This was on, this was, I, I took these right off of the, the website, added to the application.
I didn't get any pictures at all.
Oh, well, this was on the, this is on the Westerly's website.
They're not included in our packet.
Oh, God. Well, may I, may I present them to the board so you can see for purposes of discussion?
I have to give it to the attorney first.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, there's a overview of the site area that I'll mark as applicant's one for purposes of this evening's hearing. And then there's a set of two photographs that depict the stone wall around the property. One looking east from Pauline Street, the other looking south from Nile Street. We'll mark that as applicant's two. And I'll circulate them to more members.
Could, we see that now that it's been submitted. And Jeff, we also have here the topography on the map. If you wish to see, there's stuff on the Google Maps.
Oh, actually, I could provide the, I have the U S G S topo map that came with that report as well. I could.
Give it to our attorney, please.
With your permission, Mr. Chairman, we'll mark the single-page U S G S topography map as applicant's three.
And I, I do, I would have had ample
Relax, relax.
But
What we need, no, we, we got them here still.
Okay.
Yeah, no problem.
I just want each board member to see this.
And the thing that I was going to point out with regard to that, the, the lot is relatively flat. And we're also mindful that anything that is built cannot result in any increase in net runoff from that to adjacent properties. That's the law. They cannot do anything that would increase any runoff onto any adjacent properties. At this time, I'm not aware of any issues with anything coming on, but certainly it would be the applicant's obligation in building this property out to ensure that there was no net increase in runoff. That's code.
Thank you. I'm gonna need those back once everybody's seen them.
Do you have any questions?
I, I have to ask the board first. Does anybody have any, any other questions for Mr. Brunk? Okay, you have a question? Go.
I don't know if you know this or not, but are they gonna keep the stone wall that's on the property now?
Part of it. I, I can have the Mr.
Sworn in before he can.
It's not really relevant. I'm just curious. It was a nice wall. I thought it would look kind of.
Yeah, I, I agree. It's a beautiful.
Okay. Any other questions? Does anybody here in the audience have, uh, wanna speak in favor of this? I assume, I'm, I'm assuming that concludes your.
Yes, unless there's some other questions that my client could answer. He's planning to construct the, the home.
Okay. Does anybody in the audience want to speak against this project? Does anybody in the audience need more information on this project? Okay, then I'm going to call the board. I'm gonna start with Jeff.
I'm in favor of the, the new construction.
Dawn?
I'm in favor.
Larry?
I'm also in favor.
Alan?
I'm also in favor.
Lori? Okay, I also agree with my colleagues. So I need a motion to close this hearing.
So moved.
All right, Alan made the motion and Larry Burns seconded it. Okay, all those in favor? All right, thank you. I'm gonna turn it over now to Larry Burns.
Mr. Chairman, we have before us a request by Jake Santilli, who is requesting a dimensional variance to construct a new three-bedroom, single-family residence thirty-four by thirty-eight with a one-car garage and a vacant lot at Five Pauline Street pursuant to section two sixty dash thirty-three variances and two sixty attachment ten schedule of dimensional regulations of the Town of Westerly zoning ordinance. The subject property is a vacant corner lot which contains The subject property is a vacant corner lot which contains five thousand nine hundred and ninety-four square feet and has seventy-five feet of frontage on Pauline Street and eighty feet of frontage on Nile Street. There are no wetlands on the property and it is not in a flood zone. The lot is in a high-density residential fifteen zone, HDR fifteen, and the surrounding neighborhood consists of high-density residential fifteen, HDR fifteen. The zoning board held a public hearing concerning the application on June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Zoning Board members Jeffrey Russo, Vice Chairman Larry Chappa, Larry Burns, Alan Martone, and alternate Lori Moore were present and heard testimony during the entirety of the public hearing. Recused was Chairman Walter Powellkovich. The zoning board was provided with a zoning narrative dated June fifth, two thousand twenty-three, which outlined the details of the application and was also summarized by zoning official Martin Moisel during the public hearing thereby made part of the record. Uh, the following individuals spoke as representatives and experts of the applicant, Patrick Doherty and Paige Brock. No individual spoke during the public hearing in support of the request. No individual spoke during the public hearing in opposition to the request. Uh, were those materials added as additional materials?
Yes, they were.
Um, so I would describe those as photographs and a topographical map were added and entered into the record. Uh, Mr. Chairman, through the public hearing process, the board heard that the applicant's request for dimensional variance is based on the existing zoning setbacks combined with a small lot size do not allow for a reasonably sized footprint for a home. The following plans and specifications are hereby made a part of this approval and may not be altered, amended, or changed in any material way unless approved by the Westerly zoning board to review. The determination of whether any alteration, amendment, or change in the approved plans is material shall be made by the town zoning official and the zoning board chairman. The zoning board hereby grants the zoning official administrative authority to approve further non-material modifications to its approved plans. Site plan, survey and proposed site plan prepared for Jake Santilli, one sheet prepared by East Greenwich Surveyors LLC stamped by Kirk D. Andrews, PLS number sixteen eighty-four, dated March third, two thousand twenty-three, and revised through March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Architectural plans thirty-four by twenty-four shotgun colonial, three sheets prepared by DLR Dimensions Incorporated Residential Designers and dated October second, two thousand twenty. Considering the information presented at the public hearing, it is my opinion that the applicant has satisfied the standards of section two sixty dash thirty-three variances, whereby the granting of the variance, number one, is due to the unique characteristics of the land and which it resides and is not due to the physical or economic disability of the applicant because the building lot in question is relatively small at five thousand nine hundred and ninety-four square feet. And like many of the lots in the neighborhood, it will require zoning relief in order to build a home that is consistent in size and type with the neighboring properties. Two, that the alleged hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant and does not result primarily from the desire of the applicant to realize greater financial gain because in this case, the claimed hardship is that the building envelope under the current zoning setbacks will require relief in order to build an adequately sized home. Hardship is peculiar to the situation of the applicant. There is a hardship of strict adherence to the dimensional requirements interfere with the reasonably full enjoyment of uses permitted on the property or if strict adherence is contrary to the spirit of the zoning ordinance and amounts to an unnecessary injustice of the applicant. There may also be hardship if there's an irregular shape or other peculiar characteristic unique to the subject parcel. Here, there is a hardship because many of the lots in this neighborhood are small and if the existing homes were built today, they would require zoning relief. Therefore, the application, the applicant should be given similar relief for the reasonable enjoyment of their property. Three, will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or comprehensive plan because the proposed home is similar in size and type to the neighboring homes and should not negatively influence the general character of the surrounding area. Four, is justified as being the least relief necessary because the fifteen hundred and fifty-one square foot proposed home is consistent with other homes in the neighborhood. Five, and the alleged hardship suffered by the owner, if the dimensional variance is not granted, would amount to more than a mere inconvenience. The applicant has demonstrated that the relief sought is reasonably necessary for the full enjoyment of the applicant's permitted use. In reaching this conclusion, the board has considered the fact that if the applicant is prohibited from using its property for its chosen permitted use because of a dimensional restriction, the applicant has met the quote, more than mere inconvenience unquote standard. Here, the use is a single-family home and it is permitted and it is a permitted use. In addition, the applicant has demonstrated that if the dimensional variance is not granted, denial would amount to more than a mere inconvenience because they would be denied the right to build a reasonably sized home. As such, Mr. Chairman, I approve a seven foot, five-inch front yard setback variance, a one-foot-nine-inch right side yard setback variance, and then eleven-foot-six-inch rear yard setback variance to construct a new three-bedroom, single-family residence thirty-four by thirty-eight feet with a one-car garage and the vacant lot at five Pauline Street pursuant to section two sixty thirty-three variances and two sixty attachment ten schedule of dimensional regulations, the town of Westerly zoning ordinance with no conditions.
We have a second. Jeff? Seconded it. All those, uh, in favor?
I.
Close.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. And before I move to the next item, I neglected to, uh, introduce our wonderful note taker before, Stephanie Lasorda, and without her, we couldn't do any of this. Okay, our next order of business is, uh, Harkins, nineteen East Hills Road. Yes.
All right, shall I begin?
We're, we're not getting rid of you. We're just, we're just.
I see how it is.
Okay, could you fill us in on, uh, what's going on here? Um, uh, let, let's let our, um, officer, zoning officer, please.
The applicant is requesting a special use permit and dimensional variances to construct a one hundred and fifty-nine square foot three-season room addition on the existing house at nineteen East Hills Road pursuant to section two sixty dash thirty-four special use permits, section two sixty dash thirty-three variances, and section two sixty dash thirty-two D nonconformance of the Westerly zoning ordinance. Nineteen East Hills Road contains two single-family dwellings. The small cottage at the front of the property was constructed in nineteen eighty-three. The main house at the rear where the addition is proposed was constructed in nineteen twenty. The lot contains seven thousand three hundred and three square feet or point one seven acres and is in the low-density residential forty-three, LDR forty-three zoning district. The neighborhood surrounding the subject property consists of low-density residential forty-three, LDR forty-three, and commercial recreational CR. There are no wetlands on the property and the lot is in the, the lot is not in a flood zone. Lot contains only six, sixteen point eight percent of the lot area required for the LDR forty-three zone. Given the restrictive setbacks on this lot, there is no place on the property to construct an addition where it won't be entirely within one of the setbacks. Given the layout of the existing house, the most logical place to put the three-season room is on the south side of the kitchen. The home only contains fourteen hundred and thirty-eight square feet of living area. So the request for a one hundred and fifty-nine square foot three-season room is reasonable in order to increase the living space. As there are two single-family homes on one lot, a special use permit is required for the expansion of a non-conforming use. The addition will only expand the house by eleven percent, which is well below the twenty-five percent allowable maximum. The zoning department supports this application.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Morty? Okay, attorney for Casa, uh, you might have to move that microphone closer to you.
How's that? I'll move closer to it.
That sounds good. Okay.
Um, I'm going to keep this presentation short and sweet. I'm going to introduce a document from Al Diorio regarding, uh, potential drain, well, actually non-potential drainage issues regarding the, um, the addition. And, um, unfortunately, I didn't get it in time to include in your packet, so I'm going to give it to you now. Luckily, it's very short. And the upshot of it is that because this addition is only a hundred and fifty-nine square feet, it falls well under the threshold of six hundred square feet, which would require some type of stormwater drainage system. However, Mr. Diorio opined that it would be very easy to put a, um, a, uh, I guess it's some kind of a dry well that would easily support two hundred square feet of additional impervious surface area, let alone the hundred and fifty-nine square feet. And that's basically what's in his report here. So I'll make it a, uh, part of the record and I'll give each member a copy.
Thank you.
With your permissions, the chairman, I'll mark the June seventh, two thousand twenty-three report by Mr. Diorio. Uh, again, two pages as applicants, one for purposes of this hearing.
And with that, um, I'm just going to jump into some, uh, testimony here, uh, first from, uh, John Patrick Walsh, the architect.
I'm just going to just say, just board members want just a minute to look over this, uh, before we move on. Just give me a signal when you're ready. Okay. Uh, go ahead, sir.
Um, if we could swear in, uh, John Patrick Walsh as a witness, please.
Just state your name and your relationship to the project.
My name is John Patrick Walsh. I am a registered architect in Westerly. My office is at Nine Canal Street here in town. I am the project architect.
And you have appeared before us before from.
Oh, number of times, yes.
Okay, so we'll just recognize your, um, credentials. And please, uh, raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So hope you got.
I do.
Go ahead, sir.
Now, Mr. Walsh, um, you designed the three-season addition for this property. Is that correct?
Yes, I did.
And that's related solely to the rear house. Is that correct?
Exactly, to that concept.
What's a three-season room?
It's, it's basically a, uh, an added space to the house, uh, uh, for living area that can be used for three seasons of the year. Uh, it typically does not have, um, heating per se in it. It's, it's a room that's, um, used for winter, so not winter, I'm sorry, spring, summer and fall.
Basically to enjoy the outside without being outside, is that?
Yes.
Okay. And it's certainly not an additional bedroom. Is that correct?
Oh, no, no, it's not bedroom.
And, uh, what benefit does adding this three-season room, um, give to this particular property, this house?
Well, this, this house is very small. Um, it, as, as you can see in the existing condition drugs. Um, the square footage of the main floor to the outside exterior face of the walls is about nine hundred and ten square feet. But if you, if you take out closets, walls, the, the exterior walls, you're actually talking about a space that's around five hundred square feet of usable livable space. So when you think about, you know, two, two people living in a five hundred square foot space, huh, it, this allows you just a little bit more flexibility, a little bit more living area.
Okay. And the architectural style of this, how does that compare to other, um, houses in the area?
Um, it's, it's very similar. There are a number of homes on, on the street that are, are larger, newer homes, but there are a couple of, uh, these, um, small cottages, which, which this is. And, um, this house is kind of unique in that it has a, you know, stone, uh, lower level, uh, with a wood-framed upper level. So the concept of doing the, um, three-season room and doing it primarily in glass is to make it look like conservatory up against, uh, uh, traditional cottage.
All right. And what if any effect is this likely to have on the, uh, neighboring uses, given the design and what exists in the area?
Uh, won't, won't impact the neighbors at all.
And in fact, the rear of this property abuts the Miss Quamica Golf Course, is that correct?
Yes, it's, it backs up against golf course.
Anything else you have to add?
No, I think, I think it's a, a nice add to the property. And it would be a benefit to the owners to have a little extra space to enjoy.
Nothing further from Mr. Walsh.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Walsh? Go ahead.
So I have a general question. What's the other house on the property used for?
Excuse me?
The other home, the other house that's on the property? Aren't there two houses on the property?
Yes. Uh, I think I.
Uh, I'm going to have to need to swear you in, sir.
It's going to be addressed later.
I would, I would defer to Mr. Harkins to, to speak about the other prob, the other buildings on the property.
All right, sir, could you just, uh, give us your name and your relationship to the project?
I'm Peter Harkins and I'm a co-owner of the property with my spouse.
Okay, could you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So hope you got.
I do.
All right, go ahead.
Now, Mr. Harkins, how long have you owned this property with your wife?
Uh, more than thirty years.
Okay. The, um, Ms. Robinson asked a question about the, uh, structure at the, the front of the property nearest the road. Uh, describe that for us.
I, i- it's a wood cottage. Uh, when we first purchased the property, uh, the only livable space was the, uh, the house at the rear, the one that we're talking about this evening. Uh, that, the wooden cottage had a bathroom. It wasn't entirely finished inside. Uh, my father died. Uh, my mother was looking for a place and I wanted to signal to her that she was welcome where we were, but I didn't have any space in the, in the house that I had. So we renovated that wooden cottage and made it a, it has a one-bedroom, uh, in, in it. We've never used it. Uh, and when we were granted the approval for that, uh, we, uh, I under, I promised that I wouldn't be offering it for rent. I, people have asked me over the years many times to rent it. I've never rented it out. When my sons reached their teenage years, they moved out of our house to that house and they were forty feet away from us. So that made us feel good, but, uh, they felt independent. And, uh, it continues today. Uh, if my, one of my son's visits, he probably would opt to go there. Uh, so we use it as the third bedroom for the, uh, property.
Got it, thank you.
Sure.
Now, the house, the, uh, the rear house, the one that's at issue here, that used to be a garage, wasn't it?
Yeah, there are three, uh, relatively, well, I think, large houses, uh, up the hill, uh, that were erected, uh, around the time of the, uh, creation of the Miss Quamica Golf Club. And there are three traditional watchill homes, uh, what, what, what's the wood called? Cedar? I, I don't, uh, shingle, shingle homes. And those three homes had three garages. Uh, one of those garages had a chauffeur's apartment above it. That's the rear house that we're talking about tonight. A creative fellow, uh, who previously owned the property added, uh, uh, about a, I'd say maybe a third of the ground floor space to that property and converted it into a carriage house, purchased lead windows from some estate in New Jersey that was being demolished and flooded the house with those windows. And it has a lot of charm. It's a tiny house, I agree, uh, but it's, uh, a great vacation home. It has a lot of, uh, 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 appealing attributes to the eye. Most people who see it seem to think it's charming. Having said that, uh, that was the living room area of that house is the old garage. Next door to it is one of the original three garages, which is a, a garage that we use. And next door to that was a third garage which collapsed many years ago and it's used as a basketball court today. But, but those two things, that garage and second garage and the basketball court, they're on a different lot. Not, not, not associated with this lot.
Okay, one last question. As opposed to why do you want a sunroom, or, or rather a three-season room? Why do you need one?
The, uh, briefly, uh, mosquitoes, uh, you can't sit outside at. You can't sit outside at, at dusk or into the night without being eaten alive by mosquitoes. I don't know whether they come from the woods or the golf course, but the combination is such that it's a, a lot, and you really can't sit out there. So a screen porch would make a big difference. If we could, we, we perhaps could have put it in front of the house, but that would ruin the view of the house from the street. It would change the appearance of, of the area, which is today kind of charming. And with a screen porch jammed in front of it, I don't think it would be anywhere near as nice. We're putting it off to the side where it's at the end of a driving range for the golf club and, and can't be seen by the neighbor up the hill who has their screen porch there anyway. It's mainly to just be, have an outdoor space that we can use without being affected by the mosquitoes. Another reason is to improve the air circulation in the ground floor of the house itself. A lot of the charm for the house comes from the windows that were installed that I described to you. Those windows are lead. When we bought the house, we thought that was great. But it's not great. It poses a risk to children, and, and so we had to seal them. And we did. But there's not as much air circulation now as we would get if we were to add the screen porch to the sitting room off, off of that. And finally, more recently, you know, the area's always been occupied by animals, a lot of wild animals. And I think that's because we're not there in the wintertime. We use it as a vacation home. More recently, coyotes have joined the, the group, and there's an, an increasing flow of them. I've noticed, just walking out to the car, on two occasions in the last four weeks, I've had a chance encounter with a coyote, and we, we've only been a foot or so away from each other. I worry about children running, and the coyotes run through the yard to, to go to the woods or to the golf course. And I just worry about the two colliding and, and the, the animal panicking and perhaps biting someone or something like that. So I'd like to have a little room where I could put the grandchildren and say, play after dinner. You know, play cards, whatever it is that they do these days. So that is why I need it. I need someplace to give them that's, can't be approached by the coyotes. It's another need. The, the primary need is the mosquitoes. And that's it. I'm sorry to bother you with.
You're not bothering us, sir. Does anybody have any questions? Okay.
I have something that I need to answer on the app, can I ask?
Go right ahead.
Okay, so bear with me, because these are just things that we have to answer. I think that they're pretty plain, but I'm just gonna be short. So for ingress and egress to the lot, nothing's being changed with parking. It appears that you have parking on the, on the front of the house, on the front house, on the side of the front house.
Yes, that's right.
Um, and we're not doing, obviously, doing anything to change the way that there's any kind of a vehicle parking on the property.
No.
Um, there's literally no off-street parking on your road. I know there's a big sign that says no off-street parking. And, and you're not changing any location of trash or storage or delivery vehicles, anything related to that?
No.
Okay. Um, screening and buffering is remaining the same, exactly the same as, in other words, there's a bit, there's shrubs in between you and the Miss Quamica Club, and they're just gonna stay there, and nothing's really changed.
It's intended that they remain the same. We may trim them, you know, uh, uh, whatever is healthiest for the arborite that's behind the house. But yes, it's intended to remain the same and look the same.
And then you did mention that, and I know, I know the lot, that there's a neighbor up above you. So your screened-in porch is not gonna have like a whole cadre of lights that's going to reflect up into their property, right? You're keeping the lighting?
No, I don't believe it will. I, I haven't been able to go into their house and look down and imagine, but I can't. I, I, I don't think it will.
Mr. Walsh, are you building a whole bunch of lights in the property that are?
No, no, they, they're, we're not.
No lights will be added to the property.
To the exterior, no.
Right, to the exterior. We'll probably have a light in, inside the screen porch.
And, um, are we gonna have to worry about soil erosion when you put in the new, the new addition? It's just gonna be the same, okay?
The same. There's a retaining wall to the, to the, to that same side of the house, and that's gonna remain.
Against the neighboring property up the hill.
Right, and that remains.
Okay, and yeah, I, I actually lived across the street, and I appreciate, I did. And I appreciate the fact that the mosquitoes come and attack you. It is pretty tough out there, actually.
Yeah, they're pretty big, in August especially.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Anybody else have any questions? Attorney, because that concludes your.
It does, thank you.
Okay. I need a motion to, oh, I mean, anybody in the audience wishing to speak against this project? Anybody wishing to speak favor of the project? Anybody need more information? Okay, in that case, I'll need a motion to close the hearing. Okay, Alan made a motion. Larry Burns seconded. Okay, I'm gonna now turn it over to Dawn. Oh, yeah, so we should pull. Let's start with Lori this time.
In favor of the addition.
Larry. Nice application, I'm in favor.
Dawn?
I'm in favor.
Jeff? And I agree. Okay, turn it over. You're doing, you do her thing.
Mr. Chairman, we have before us a request by Peter and Susan Hawkins, who requests a special use permit and dimensional variances to construct a one hundred and sixty-nine square foot three-season room addition on the existing house at nineteen East Hills Road, pursuant to section two sixty dash three four special use permits, section two sixty dash three three variances, and section two sixty dash thirty-two D, nonconformance of the Westerly zoning ordinance. Nineteen East Hills Road contains two single-family dwellings. The small cottage at the front of the property was constructed in nineteen eighty-three, and the main house at the rear, where the addition is proposed, was constructed in nineteen twenty. The lot contains seventy-three hundred and three square feet, or point one seven acres, and is in the low-density residential forty-three LDR dash four-three zoning district. The neighborhood surrounding the subject property consists of low-density residential forty-three LDR dash four-three and commercial recreational CR. There are no wetlands on the property, and the lot is not in a flood zone. The zoning board public hearing was held on June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Zoning Board members Jeffrey Russo, Vice Chairman Lawrence Chapa, Larry Burns, Dawn Robinson, alternate Alan Martone, sitting as a voting member, and alternate Lori Moore were present, and heard testimony during the entirety of the public hearing. Walter Pablakovich was absent and excused. The zoning board was provided with a zoning narrative dated June sixth, twenty twenty-three, which outlined the details of the application and also summarized by zoning official Martin Louizelle during the public hearing, thereby made part of the record. The following individuals spoke as representatives and experts of the applicant, attorney for Casa, John Patrick Walsh, registered architect, and the owner, Mr. Hawkins, property owner. No individuals spoke in support of the request and none posed it. During the public hearing, the following testimony and materials were entered into the record. There's an additional, there's an additional document, which I am going to call dimensional variance request, which was added. The following plans and specifications are hereby made a part of this approval and may not be altered, amended, or changed in any material way unless approved by the Westerly Zoning Board of Review. The determination of whether an alteration, amendment, or change in the approved material, plans, or materials shall be made by the town zoning official and the zoning board chairman. The zoning board hereby grants to the zoning official administrative authority to approve further non-material modifications to this approved plans. Existing and proposed condition site plans, plan of limited content boundary survey prepared by Alfred DiOrio, RLS Incorporated, two sheets stamped by Alfred W. DiOrio, plans number seventeen fifty-two dated March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. Next item, existing conditions, architectural plans, a screened porch and exterior improvements for Peter and Susan Harkins, nineteen East Hills Road, Westerly, Rhode Island, prepared by Pa, John Patrick Walsh, AIA Architecture Design LLC. See five sheets dated January twelfth, twenty twenty-three. And last item, proposed conditions, architectural plans, a three-season room addition and exterior improvements for Peter and Susan Harkins, nineteen East Hills Road, Westerly, Rhode Island, prepared by John Patrick Walsh, AIA Architectural Design LLC. Three sheets dated January twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Mr. Chairman, through the public hearing process, the board heard the applicant's request for the special use permit is based on the fact that they need to add additional space to be able to enjoy their property entirely. A couple of noted items were the ability to remain in the open space when there are mosquitoes, animals on the property, take care of the grandkids, and make sure that there's good air circulation around the property. Considering the information presented at the public hearing, it is my opinion that the applicant has satisfied the standards of section two sixty dash three four special use permits whereby the granting of the special use permit will be compatible with the neighboring uses and will not adversely affect the surrounding neighbor's use enjoyment of their properties, because the addition is going on the side, the side back of property up against the Miss Quamica Club and down below the neighboring, the neighbor who would see the property. Item two, that the granting of the special use permit will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of this ordinance or the comprehensive plan of the town. In reaching this conclusion, the board has considered and finds that satisfactory provisions and arrangements have been and will be made concerning, but not limited to, the following matters where applicable. Satisfactory ingress and egress of the lot and to existing or proposed structures thereon, traffic flow and control and access in case of fire, emergency, or catastrophe has been shown because there is no adjustment to the parking or ingress and egress out of the property. Satisfactory off-street parking and loading areas, pedestrian and bicycle circulation and convenience has been shown by there is no off-street parking. And there is no additional off-street parking that will be required for this property. Satisfactory noise, glare, or odor effects of the special use on adjoining lots has been shown by there's no additional water, there's no additional plumbing, there's nothing that would create noise, glare, or odor effects on the neighboring properties. Satisfactory location and maintenance of trash, storage, and delivery areas, as demonstrated by the fact that we are not changing the location of any of these. We are making addition to the side of the property that does not affect any of those. Satisfactory utilities with reference to locations, availability, and compatibility as demonstrated per the questioning of Mr. Walsh. There's no additional lighting effects that we're going to have to worry about, or plumbing. Satisfactory screening and buffering with representative, with reference to the tight dimensions and character, as evidenced by the discussion that the rear property will still continue to have arborite that are of the appropriate height for the golf course and the plants, and the retaining wall will remain in place and be unaffected on the neighboring property that is above them. Satisfactory signs, if any, and exterior lighting with reference to the glare, traffic, safety, and compatibility in harmony with light, with lots in the zoning district, has been shown by there's no additional lighting that will be, there's no additional lighting that is expected to come out of the addition and affect the neighbors. Satisfactory required yards, landscape, and other open space is proven by there will be no adjustments in this addition. Satisfactory soil erosion, water supply protection, and wetland and wildlife protection has been addressed by. We have a report that says there's no wetlands that will be affected. And in questioning, Mr. Walsh said that we would not have to worry about soil erosion. Satisfactory general compatibility with lots in the same or budding zoning districts as seen by sat, satisf- as seen by, to be continued. The fact that the house has five hundred square feet of livable area, nine hundred and ten square feet of space, and we are adding something that is less than sixteen percent of the overall size of the property, so that the property owner can enjoy additional space away from mosquitoes and pets and things running through the yard. Satisfactory protection of property values is evidenced by the fact that we need the space in order to be able to keep the family there, that all best practices and procedures to minimize the possibility of any adverse effects on the neighboring property, because we have used experts to make sure that we're not oversizing the space, and we're not trying to take up more of the property than we need to. Considering the information presented at the public hearing, it is my opinion that the applicant has satisfied the standards of section two sixty dash three three variances whereby the granting of the variance is due to the unique characteristics of the land on which it is, it is, it is due to the physical or economic, no, it is not due to the physical or economic disability of the applicant, because the lot is undersized, the house is very small, the windows that have been put in the house had to be sealed, and so we are adding additional circulation to make sure that we have appropriate ventilation and space to make sure that we are keeping people from animals. Sorry, I gotta catch up. Number two, that the alleged hardship is not the result of prior action and the applicant does not result primarily from the, the applicant to realize greater financial gain. We had a discussion about the other home on the property that is not being used for any, continues to not be used for any residential use, and is available to family when they arrive if they want to use it. Hardship is also, I should note, is also a vacation home and used three seasons of the year. Hardship is peculiar to the situation of the applicant. There is a hardship if strict adherence to the dimensional requirements interferes with the reasonable full enjoyment of uses permitted on the property or if strict adherence is contrary to the spirit, spirit of the zoning ordinance and amounts to an unnecessary injustice to the applicant. There may also be hardship if there is an irregular shape or peculiar characteristics unique to the subject property. There is a hardship because the property is small. There really isn't any other place to put the addition. We're trying to use the least amount of space to protect the owners and their family from the elements. Three. Will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or comprehensive plan, because we are ensuring that the adequate use of the property can be three seasons, considering animals, wild animals coming onto the property as the family grows and continues to use the vacation home in the summertime. Is justified as being the least relief necessary, because we are not taking more area than we need just enough to be able to have the family enjoy the property, increase the circulation, and make sure that we're keeping everybody safe. And the alleged hardship suffered by the owner, if the dimensional variance is not granted, would amount to a more than mere inconvenience. The applicant has demonstrated that the relief sought is reasonably necessary for the full enjoyment of the applicant's permitted use. In reaching this conclusion, the board has considered the fact that if the applicant is prohibited from using its property for its chosen permitted use because of the dimensional restriction, the applicant has met the more than mere inconvenience standard. Here, the use is two single-family dwellings, and it is a legal nonconforming use. In addition, the applicant has demonstrated that if the dimensional variance is not granted, denial would amount to a more than mere inconvenience, because the home is very small. It is used three seasons. It allows for the owner to be able to bring their family onto the premises, protect them from mosquitoes and wild animals, and ensure that the family can grow and enjoy the property. As such, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve a special use permit, a thirty-two-point-six-foot rear yard setback variance, and a three-point-eight-foot left-side yard variance to construct a one hundred and fifty-nine square foot three-season room addition to the existing house at nineteen East Hills Road pursuant to section two sixty dash three four special use permits, section two sixty dash three three variances, and section two sixty dash thirty-two D, nonconformance of Westerly zoning ordinance with no conditions.
Second, please. Larry Burns.
All in favor?
Yes, all in favor, please.
Aye.
Close. Thank you all of you very much. Thank you. We're gonna take a five-minute recess while we get set up for the next one.
That was fine. Yeah. It's true. I don't know what it is about that area. It's like a mosquito's sting. You know, I think maybe because they watered the golf course so much. They, and it's yeah, and it's right, like, right on either side of that because it kind of goes out. There's like a little pond thing. I could, I could tell you.
Yes.
That little house on Winnipeg, so? Uh, yeah, it's actually a very big, yeah.